Uh, please take the roll.
Mayor Robert Axemacher.
Present.
Mayor Pertem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
It looks like everyone is present. Uh, we have three business items on the specialist's session, uh, all requiring executive session. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for three purposes. First, executive session pursuant to section 2464024A regarding the possible purchase of real estate, real property interest in the town of Timnith. Second, executive session pursuant to section 2464024B and 4E for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and for the purpose of determining positions related to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators related to contractual obligations of Riverbend Ventures LLC for reimbursement costs associated with capital improvements. And third, executive section pursuant to 2464024B for purposes of conferences with an attorney, for the local public body, for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to pending litigation, Timnith Trail LLC versus the town of Timnith.
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of moving to executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in executive session. (Audio cut off.)
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closing the council.
Aye.
Adjourned. We are adjourned. Let's take a five minute break and then we'll resume with the normal council session.
Mayor Robert Axmacher.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
All right, all members are present. Item number two, is there any requests to amend the agenda this evening? Right, seeing none, we will progress to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for individuals in the community to address council on members not, on matters not otherwise part of the agenda. See, we have three people signed up. One of them has indicated a desire to speak on seven A. There are two others signed up. I'm curious, Mr. Nelson, are you hoping to provide general public comment or to speak on one of the later items? Okay, and Ms. Newman.
Same thing.
Same thing, okay. So, last call, is there anyone that would like to address council on a general matter? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of four items. Approval of the May fourteenth town council meetings, the May third check register, the May seventeenth check register, and resolution forty-five, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving the copier lease amendment with all copy products. Any requests from council to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. We will move on to mayor and council reports. I have two items to share. The first is, I want to thank Kevin Cobal for his service to the town. Kevin will be leaving us at the end of this week to pursue matters in states north of us. But Kevin, thank you so much. Our town wouldn't be what it is today without your work and dedication, and very much appreciate your service. Second item is one that I mentioned last time, which is, we have finalized the details for our June twentieth Future of Old Town brainstorming session. That will start at six thirty at the Presbyterian Church in Old Town. I believe four of our five council members will be there. The town will be putting out some information tomorrow on how folks can sign up for that. We are asking people to RSVP just so that we can make sure that we have appropriate accommodations and whatnot. But this really is for anyone that has an interest or desire in being part of forming the future of Old Town. And so certainly residents and businesses in Old Town, we'd love to see you there, but also anyone in the community that enjoys Old Town or wants to see it flourish. And also, even if you don't have a connection to Timmouth, but you might have an idea of how you might be able to contribute or be part of the future, we'd love to see you there. Other council members?
I have one item. On May sixteenth, I spent the entire day at the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization offices, interviewing candidates for the executive director position. And on May twenty-third, an offer was accepted. And Paul Sizemore of Fort Collins has accepted the new position or the position of executive director to lead that organization beginning July twenty-fourth. He previously worked for the city of Fort Collins as the Director of Community Development and Neighborhood Services. And then for the public that might not know what the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization is, it's an association of, I believe, seventeen local governments working together to improve regional transportation and air quality. And that organization provides both short-term and long-term planning, prioritizing projects in those plans for state and federal funding. And it involves billions of dollars that go into this region, which covers a good part of Larimer County and Weld County.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Mayor Pro Tim Wagner.
I just want to thank town staff for their effort with the safety fair. I thought we had another successful safety fair. I personally enjoyed the dog that was out there. So they did a demonstration with the dog and then always the most popular was the helicopter. So it was kind of cool to see it flying and out. But I want to thank all of our partners, our first responders, and everybody involved in the safety fair as well. So, thank you.
I'll actually, I'll echo that. I think the safety fair was awesome. My three-year-old got to get in the driver's seat of a cop car and then managed to lock himself in there and smile at us. So I don't know if it was him or the officer that locked him in there on purpose and hit the sirens, but it was awesome. Whether it be RPD or surrounding areas, great event. So those that haven't come, please do in the future. And then the seventh, from six to eight, we have an ice cream social coming up. So I think our town does a killer job with events. So come join us for that and have some ice cream.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, on to staff reports. Skigley, are you with the finance report?
Nothing to add.
Council, any questions? Mr. Stone, Public Works.
So I have some good news for you. We submitted a safety action plan grant. This was part of the transportation plan, a lot of concern within the community about safety for all modes. So we were successful in getting two hundred twenty thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Again, this grant's for preparing a safety action plan for the town, which is alignment, like I said, with the transportation master plan. Safety Action Plan is a comprehensive data-driven approach to improve road safety in the community for all users. And part of this grant would be able to do some data collecting and being able to have a database of all the, you know, crash data and stuff like that. So more likely, this will be next year. We're going to plan on, it's a match, so the community has a twenty percent match. That's fifty-five thousand dollars. So for fifty-five thousand dollars, we get two hundred twenty thousand dollars worth of help on that. So just wanted you to be aware of that, and we'll put that in the budget. So I don't know if you have any questions on that?
Fantastic. That's great. Anything else for Director Stone? All right, Community Development, Director Robinson. Council, any questions? And then finally, Chief Jones.
Just a couple of items. Mayor, as mentioned, the safety fair went off without a hitch, presumably along the lines of locking your child in the car. So we aim to please. Our four newest officers, the three have graduated from the FTO program, Field Officer Training. And we've also been successful in one graduating the police academy. And we are on track to hire two additional officers. Additional to your packet, Bethke hosted their Bike to School Day on the fifteenth, which was very much a success. We've mentioned the safety fair, and then two officers did a, it's called a cat paw grant. It's by the State Patrol of catalytic converter etchings with the help of Schwab Tire. So we did that, and we had forty-five participants. Councilmember Wagner, his wife was present, and so that was also a success. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, if you have them.
Will that etching be an annual event?
As long as the grant holds out, we'll participate.
Councilman Chief, and note, I had the opportunity to sit in on the police staff meeting last week, so I appreciated that invitation and the chance to connect directly with the troops. So appreciate you making that available, Chief.
You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now on to our regular business items. One that I'm very excited about, which is Business 7A, recognition of the Timneth Middle High School Girls Track Team. This time, I would ask them to come in and join us, along with, there's any coaching staff here. Hello? Ladies and coach, thank you so much for joining us. We are so excited here to celebrate your success. For those that don't know, this is the first-ever state championship team from the Timneth Middle High School. The girls' track and field team were Patriot League Conference Champions this year. In the 2A State Championship, they crushed the competition with a score of 131. Second place had 66 points. So just a dominating performance, of which we are all very, very proud of you. Coach Middlinberg is the Coach of the Year for both the Patriot League and the State 2A Conference, which is no small achievement. So, Coach, congratulations. Individually, we had some stellar performances, including Addison Garrettz in the 300-meter hurdles. Congratulations. In the 800-meter, Natalie Washborn is a repeat champion there, and also the Blue Federal Credit Union Athlete of the Week, week before last. So congratulations. The 4x800 relay team, also repeat champions. Aisley Stone, Izzy Schimmel-Finnig, Jensen DeAngelis, and Natalie Washborn, part of that team. And then in both the 4x200 relay and the 4x100 relay, Alex McKnight, Lizzie Eisbrenner, Hannah Bittner, and Emily Volker, champions there. I will also mention, not sure if he's here, but we did have a champion on the boys' side, Cameron Glasgow on the pole vault. So congratulations to everyone. We are all very proud of you, and thank you so much for joining us here today. At this time, I'd ask council to come down, and if it'd be all right, we'd love to take a picture with you. Tell you what, do you guys maybe want to? Yeah, what's best? You guys want to do that two rows? Can I get close to the trophy? Is that okay? I want to get close to the trophy. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Coach. Congratulations. All right, well, I'm surprised they didn't want to hear about our next item. 6B, a resolution approving amended and restated 2024 municipal law enforcement agreement. Ms. Stefel.
Thank you. We've also got Chief Jones here, so he may want to contribute a little bit. But this is the amendment that we talked about when you first approved the IGA with Larimer County for police support. And at that time, we talked about the fact that we would be bringing an amendment back to you for when the town could go to 24/7 patrol coverage, and this is that amendment. So what it does is it decreases the services by keeping most of the services in there, except for removing that overnight patrol service. And then it will also have, but it will still keep in a number of things, including support, including records management, including mental, the mental health unit, and so that, and investigations, so that we still have all of those pieces to support the police. And the reduction in cost is going to be for just the remainder. This is going to go into effect on July 1. And so the reduction in cost will just be for the remainder of the year to reduce the cost from 241,378 to 151,938. So, and half of that would be savings, because that's the annual cost reduction. So half of that would be savings for the second half of 2024, for a savings of $44,720. And I can answer any questions. The chief can probably answer more detailed questions.
Chief, should we sign this?
Absolutely. It's an accomplishment, to say the least, and it's a savings of $44,000 for the town.
Council, any questions?
I have one question for you, Chief. It relates to the warrant section in 1.5. Can you just walk me through that? And it says, you know, we may incur any fees made pursuant to warrants. Do we expect any additional fees to there? Or how will that look?
The, it's somewhat responsible for the court system to enter in that information now with an ORI, originating agency, which will fall to Lizzie. If an individual fails to appear in court, she will have the capability of entering it into the system. The, to the best of my recollection, prior to our new city attorney coming on board, I think we only had two warrants, and they were entered by the Sheriff's Department. So the Sheriff Fane has not charged us anything, in my recollection, for those computer data entries. So I think it's, it goes without saying, there's no cost savings. But Lizzie will have the opportunity to enter warrant information, providing it's an FTA, failure to appear.
Thanks, Chief. That was my only question.
Any other questions? All righty, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 46, Series 2024, a resolution approving amended and restated 2024 municipal law enforcement agreements. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lake. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add a comment that this is awesome, something that I've wanted as a resident. Congratulations, and keep doing the great work you guys are doing.
I just want to reiterate that. This has been a long time coming. I know it was listed as a top priority of community members in the survey that was done back in, I believe, 2017 or 2018. So I know we've been working towards this for many years, so thank you.
In addition to Chief's hard work, I also want to thank Aaron for his hard work, and I know Hope's been working on this a lot, so I want to thank all the town staff involved. Super excited, so thank you so much.
All right, this is exciting news. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries unanimously. We will now move on to Section 7, which are public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first related to Item 7A, Ordinance 11, Series 2024, in ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 6, the Timneth Land Use Code, Amendment Number 14. I will note that we did receive one comment letter from Attorney White, which has been incorporated into the record. What we will have here is a presentation by staff, and then an opportunity for public comment, followed by any questions from staff members, and then we'll discuss options from there. So with that, Director Robinson. Thanks, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Chad Kemper, so if you can provide the staff report and presentation. Very good. Kemper.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Just for some brief context for anyone tuning in or in the audience that may not be aware, staff continues to monitor the land use code throughout the year, whether that be through development reviews, finding inconsistencies, or wanting to maintain best practices in the field, in addition to any state or local requirements that we're in tune with, just to ensure that we're adhering to those. So those are the text amendments that are being proposed in the packet today. This was discussed initially with council and Planning Commission in a work, a joint work session in April. It was then brought forth to Planning Commission on the May 7 meeting date. Their recommendation was included in your packet. So I'm prepared to do a very high level of all these proposed changes within Amendment Number 14, if that works for council. And then any questions at the end, we can dive into any of these items, should there be any questions.
Great, I'd appreciate that. And of course, we did do the work session on this. My thought is maybe do your presentation, hear the public comment, and then we can maybe incorporate some of that public comment into any questions that the council has.
Okay. So starting with Article 1, which is authority, purpose, and acclivity, sorry. We have minor text amendments to the code relating to fees owed by the applicant to align with our updated fee agreement form. It's essentially what those edits are. Within Article 2 is the administrative, administration section. We're adding expirations to application submittals for an active and more effective development review process. We are proposing to amend the subdivision review criteria for minor subdivisions to promote transparency during development, to ensure full understanding of that development, while increasing the opportunity for public input. This was one that was included in your public comment. We are also adding in design standards specific to the Harmony Corridor that may be waived by Town Council under that waiver criteria, that are not necessarily meeting the existing departures permitted in that section. In addition, we are providing clarifying items for the document issued by staff for zoning compliance. This is actually considered a compliance letter rather than a permit, so just a amendment there. Within Article 3, Establishment of Districts, we are revising the future land use designations within Table 3.1 of the code. These are associated with the zoning districts to match the comprehensive plans permitted zoning classifications. Within Article 4 is the use regulations. We are removing contradictory language over the overview of districts within the table of uses. This aligns with Sections 321 and 322 of the code. We are also adding mixed-use building to the table of uses. This was proposed when we discussed this at the work session, and council had asked that we look into these permissions a little bit further. We have since modified this to mimic the mixed-use dwelling, so it's prohibited in the industrial zone, because there is the responsibility or intent to have a residential component within that mixed-use building. So we felt that since the residential component is involved, to remove it from industrial. We are also reestablishing land use permissions for similar or comparable industrial uses within Table 4.1, to avoid any unnecessary discrepancies. Article 5 is the development standards. Per council request, we have reevaluated spacing between retail fuel stations and increased this distance from a quarter mile to a half mile. And we have also removed the intersection type that was within that. So it is now any intersection outside of the Harmony Corridor is limited to one retail fuel station. We have added enhanced design standards around the garage location and orientations for block diversity, added clarification to tree sizing requirements at initial planting, enhanced our guidelines and parameters for parking and drive aisle screening within developments, provide a clarifying language to the street tree requirement for residential developments, remove the requirement to calculate parking for restaurant use to include outdoor seating areas, and this is based on other areas, and seems to be best practice for these uses. Revised sections of the Harmony Corridor Design Standard to further the intent of that code and feel of this corridor. This includes applicable zoning districts within that, building placement, and building size. Then within Article 6 is the circulation. Staff has encountered ambiguous language within the town's criteria for street standards that do not match the requirements set forth by the Lucas Standards. So we're just providing clarity that these items will allow staff added context to enforce these items when we're viewing development proposals. Essentially, if it is being proposed as a private drive, it would then have to meet the minimum standards of a local drive in the Lucas Criteria, so that staff can monitor that moving forward. In addition to, in Article 6 is a minor text amendment to remove any outdated calculations that align with the current IGA with the Pooter School District. This proposal will capture dedication requirements for future school districts, not just the Pooter School District. So we did change that language to also capture that as well. And then as a request of council, we have included what was in that IGA for your review. In Article 7, signs, we are bringing forth additional prohibited signs that are secondary to development. It should not negatively impair their potential user from staff's perspective. And these have been deemed to potentially hinder the community's safety or appearance. Included with this was the addition of window signs. So there was a discussion about this with our Planning Commission. As you see in the staff report, they had a recommendation that we do have a size requirement within this. However, we have not proposed to move forward with that recommendation. We have maintained the full prohibition of a window sign, as noted in the criteria or in this amendment. Article 10, around annexation, we are actually going to remove from tonight's discussion and bring forward at a later date, most likely with another update that is soon to come. We have found some other items that could also be reworked with these additions that we would like to capture all at the same time. So that would be part of that motion that was presented to you guys to remove Article 10, Section 10612 from tonight's discussion. Lastly, we have just added to Article 11, which is our definitions section, the addition of window signs. Otherwise, we've reviewed those as wall signs, so we just wanted to add some clarity within that section. With that, that was a very high-level overview of these changes, and happy to dive into any that you may see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper. I think we'll receive the public comment and then do questions after that. So public comment on this matter is limited to three minutes per speaker. First, I have Sherry Welch signed up. Welcome, Ms. Welch. If you'll just state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Sherry Welch, 7785 Hyland Meadows Parkway. Windsor is work address. Good evening, council, mayor. During, we've been here a lot over the last few months doing our annexation, doing our major subdivision. And through that process, we've had to do a lot of neighborhood meetings or neighborhood meetings and a lot of talk to engage the public on what we were doing and get feedback and do papers back to planning staff as to what they're saying. Now we discovered just recently that there's major code changes, and it seems like there's been a lack of transparency to the developers in town and maybe landowners of what was going on and what, how that could impact their plans, what was going on. And it seems like whether it was, we've been meeting with staff and planning group to finalize our annexation, and there was no talk about some of this, particularly the need now to do a major subdivision and the Lucas standards on some of the private drives, how our development works out, and some of the roads are pretty short and just access a couple lots. The amount of land and how we make those compatible with Lucas standards is done. So I guess even though there's been work sessions, I don't know how much input from developers there were to propose other things or be part of the process. And so I ask that maybe you consider that we need, taking a step back and including some of those comments. Another planner we've been working with who has, works with multiple developers in Timneth, she's also said that her or none of her clients knew any of this, some of these major things were coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welch, appreciate you. Grant Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening. I brought handouts, they'll hand out to you guys. Grant Nelson, Republican Investment Group, ninety-six, thirty-five, Maroon Circle, Inwood, eight oh, one, one, one. Welcome, Mr. Mayor, new mayor, new councilman Jenkins. And appreciate you guys taking the time tonight. Following up on what Sherry said, we've been, I think, working on Ladera since twenty twenty, and we've met with staff a number of times. In fact, I think Kevin's going to be happy when he leaves, he doesn't have to talk to me anymore. I'm just kidding. But I would communicate with Kevin on a fairly regular basis. As it relates to the code changes, I think what we're looking for is just a communication, a dialogue about what's being proposed, how it's being proposed, what's in there. We understand the major minor subdivision changes. We suggested that there might be some, some adjustments for the town, doing the Walmart, doing the Costco, doing Florida Decor. We had to do minor subdivisions, we had to act quickly. A year-long process would have killed the deal. So we will do major subdivision, we're going to submit one the next week. It's probably going to take thirteen months to get through. You guys went through a thirty-five day process. We're just asking that there be some transparency between the development community and the community and the town. What's in front of you is exactly what Sherry's discussed. We laid out some of the private drives in Ladera, adding the additional six feet into just these private drives is another fifty-seven hundred lineal feet of asphalt. The minimum in Lucas is thirty-six feet with, we do thirty-foot drives mostly in private development. And within commercial developments, our private drives are highly, highly discussed, highly debated. The two anchors that you see just south of Florida Decor with the orange line, that is the major sporting goods retailer and the grocery we've been talking to. We have locked in on these sites. Trying to add in another five feet now is going to make it very difficult to get these guys to agree to. And just understand, it's not our standards that we're living to, it's theirs. So the retailer who's going to, going to build, you know, thirty, twenty-five or thirty million dollars invested in the community, their standards is what we have to deal with. Now to come back and say, oh, yeah, we have to add another six feet in, it will cause problems. I'm not saying it will kill the deal, but it will cause problems and they will be unhappy about it. It will kill some of their parking, and parking is key in these situations. So I guess as it relates specifically to circulation, the Lucas standards in twenty-five, thirty years of doing real estate development, private drives are private drives. They don't have a public standard to them. If the town wants a public standard, then let's talk about it and let's discuss what it should be. But just adopting Lucas, I don't think it's the right thing for the town or the community. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And finally, Liz Newman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Elizabeth Newman, six fifty automation in Windsor. I am the developer for Sweetsville. I am here to basically say a lot of what they just said, but I have just designed the west side and I'm about to annex. And I wanted to come here today because basically the Lucas is going to kill me. I don't have a lot of room on the west side to add all that extra room to have a, have, first of all, I don't have a lot of access because I really only have one access. I'm going to be fighting to get a second. And to be able to try to institute some of these changes is not going to work for me. It's going to be, I'm going to be asking for a lot and a lot of help to get this done. I'm the tenth developer to come through to get Sweetsville done, to help relieve that corner of, to be something beautiful. So this, please help us get, don't do this to us. And that's why I'm here, so that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, we appreciate you being here. I'm guessing council has quite a few questions. So my thought is maybe two or three questions apiece, and then we can circle back around if people have extra, but guess who'd like to start us off?
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to start off. I think the first thing I'd like to address is the issue of transparency, which all three public speakers brought up, and something I was concerned about as a private citizen and, and one of my motivations for running for council was to try to figure out how we could improve dialogue between the town, its citizens and, and the developers. So looking at the work session, which I printed out our, our notice on the work session, it just says land use code updates, period. There's no information on that public notice about the content of the changes. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense in the future if we posted a staff report that's going to be presented. Maybe we don't have all of the nitty-gritty details, but at least an overview of what's being covered in a, in a work session, which is open to the public. So at least it would then invite people to attend if there was a topic of interest in the staff report or the staff overview. So that's one thing I think could help with, with transparency is giving advance notice about the content of a work session, which is open to the public but not open for public comment at that time. Would better prepare them for future meetings. For example, the planning commission, where there were public hearings on it, but it would give them a, an advance notice, just like town council had advanced notice about the content and was able to give you guys feedback. So that would be one thing I would like to see us do.
Great, thank you, Councilman Jenkins. And I think that's probably something to continue to drill down on when we get to discussion. Specifically, questions for staff on this?
So can, related to this, private drives with the LCUAS standards, can you tell me how this might benefit the town? What is the purpose of including in it? And here is there, you know, I know we've talked a lot about safety standards, right? We've, we've talked about that in previous councils, and we've held to a lot of those for, say Harmony Road is one of those that we've used the Lucas standards for. So can you help me understand why it might be necessary in a private drive?
Yeah, Director Robinson, basically it just comes down to having a baseline standard that staff have something to evaluate with. Oftentimes, you'll see developments, even the development, even the comments suggested that they want to be able to negotiate those agreements and approvals moving forward. This just provides staff the ability to have a baseline standard to work from. Another thing to keep in mind in regards to consistency for mobility, both from public and private, most people don't know where that line is for public transportation versus private drives and what have you. We want to make sure there's a consistency for those mobility options, either whether it be sidewalks or roadways, drive cuts and what have you, site, site distance triangle. So those are the things that we're looking to make sure there's consistency from both the public and private interface with these developments, therefore referencing back to the Lucas standards so that we have a baseline to work from. And I don't know if Kevin or Chad want to provide any additional feedback on that.
Yeah, and another reason for looking at doing at least a baseline standard is, you know, Scott mentioned is, if for some reason in the future, there's a development that a metro district or HOA no longer wants to maintain or can actually maintain those roads, taking over a road that doesn't meet town standards is a very difficult thing to do, especially from a public work standpoint. They've got to maintain a road that doesn't meet our criteria from that standpoint. So that, that's another reason for wanting at least that baseline standard is that if for some reason in the future, you know, some metro district HOA goes defunct or they don't have the operations budget anymore and they want the town to take it over, there is at least that common standard that then we're working with roads that are similar and known to us.
Thank you. Related to that topic, if we were to pass those Laramie County standards, but a developer had a really compelling argument as to why a standard wouldn't work in an area or they had a brilliant idea that that would be better than the standards, is that something that could be achieved either through a PD overlay or through a variance or an exception? Are there other processes that we could achieve that?
There are. We have done road sections and PD overlays before. Luke, I don't know if Lucas specifically does, but I know our technical criteria manual allows for the town engineer to waive standards that are, that are, you know, deemed applicable, you know, that could be from Lucas, you know, from that standpoint. So there are some avenues that could be done. But as Scott had mentioned, this is just to, you know, start with the, the same baseline across the board.
Do you know, or do other municipalities, anyone around us, have, have they adopted a similar standard? Or do they let private roads just do their own thing?
I was gonna say, just heard Firestone does, and I think, I think Justin might have a way in on Loveland coming recently from there.
Yes, I've been working on Lucas for twenty years, especially with the last major update. So the, the Lucas criteria is mainly geared for public streets. But like what was mentioned, a lot of people don't know if you're public or private and you want to have the multimodal. So for in Loveland, I know we did work at some developments. It was like with PU, like a PUD overlay would be able to do their own street standards. That was, you know, possible to go that route. But also I was actually, you know, we were working on some guidelines in Loveland that kind of help out, especially alley-loaded type stuff. But this, like was mentioned before, this would at least set some guidelines at the beginning. There is the issue I've dealt with over the twenty years where I've seen where roads weren't built to the standard. They weren't being maintained because, you know, roads have to be maintained, otherwise they become a real issue and then they get really costly to, to maintain. So there were situations where the roads weren't built to the standards and then they came to the towns or cities to kind of then fix that. So then that burden shifts to the rest of the, to the, you know, to the rest of the public and citizens. So actually Lucas does have a provision that says that, like in Loveland, that they would not accept private roads for maintenance unless they met the standard for those reasons. So it's a, it's a really delicate balancing act on that. But I think this sets us up, I'm sorry, pretty well to at least we have a baseline and then we can go from there. But other communities do have a little bit of flexibility where they do different standards. I know it depends, it's context sensitive too. So I know in Loveland, if it was like a commercial development, those were pretty easy. Those were allowed to be private drives. When you get to the issue is when you have like a small cul-de-sac or something, when you have three or four homeowners that then have to provide that maintenance. That's becomes a challenge when you have specific single-family homes that are lots. The town did do a policy, Loveland did, to not allow those to be private drives because of that issue. But if you had like a bigger development, mixed use or like a commercial or industrial where you had mechanisms, agreements that would maintain those, so it was context sensitive.
Councilmember Hope, so you, you almost took the words out of my mouth with an answer before I asked it. But when we do this, do, do we have to adopt this as a whole? If the major concern is more of an HOA and less of commercial, is there a way to adopt this on a residential HOA side and be more lenient on a commercial side? I mean, I, it's a double-edged sword. I don't want to carte blanche, say yes to everything, development, just come, you know, come with what you are. But I also don't want to deter good amenities from coming from, you know, things that could be avoided or other towns are allowing on a commercial side to, to go forth. So I guess that's, that's question one. Question two is, meeting the standards, is that purely for a safety, call it snow plowing? And what is it specifically? Is it the width of it? Is it the material that's used? What are those, what's your biggest safety concern there?
Yeah, so on the roads, the other thing, what we noticed, especially when you want to reduce the size, it's becomes more complex the more you try to shrink everything down.
Sure.
It gets into not necessarily the transportation aspects. What we found out in Loveland was our trash trucks, being able to get them in and out with the parking. So you almost have to design the road in three D instead of two D. And that's when we were working on the guidelines. So it's very, you know, it'd be somewhat a challenge because it is so context sensitive on that. And I'll leave up, you know, leave that to the, because this is a land use code provision.
Yeah.
So Lucas is separate, so they're just referencing.
Sure.
And we want to make sure whatever we, what's done in the land use code matches then what we have in Lucas. So from my perspective, it's more the maintenance, future public work side of it. Also, the utility providers, as you get condensed, we found out the big issue in Loveland too was, yeah, you could shrink the road, but then if you have utilities in there, how does that work? So it gets very complex as you, you know, squeeze it down. But as far as safety, yes, there definitely, the roads are based on safety considerations. For a local street, you are looking at lower speeds, but there is still kind of the site distance. And then also you usually have, on the local roads, they allow the multimodal part of it where actually the bikes can share the road. So you have to consider, you know, bicyclists are going to be on there. And also where do you have the pedestrians? So you got to think about, you know, all those factors for safety when you mix all those different uses. So Lucas is based upon maintenance and also the safety aspects. But I think tonight is the more, bigger picture discussion on the actual land use code. It's not really changes to the Lucas, they're just adopting kind of what, referencing what is in Lucas. I'll let them answer more, I guess, the policy or the land use side of it.
Yeah, we already have Lucas adopted. We go, we actually go Lucas Loveland, there's two versions, there's a Fort Collins and a Loveland version. And we've already adopted that as part of, as a whole from that standpoint. We're just now basically referencing back that a private street needs to meet that, the bare minimum standard from that standpoint. And to answer one of your, you know, previous questions, you know, council members, right now, all of the commercial minus, any commercial property in Timneth minus Old Town either has some type of metro district or business improvement district over it. So that metro district still could play into an effect with commercial if the metro district is the one that is maintaining internal private roads. And I, I would be concerned with a little bit of just giving commercial a free break without having the minimum standard. And like, you know, Mayor Oxmacher mentioned, is that there's other avenues that it could be reduced for certain aspects? Because if a commercial development comes in- Because if a commercial development comes in with a, you know, I'll call it a main thoroughfare through that needs to most likely meet a local, maybe collector standard, and they want to make it a private drive, and then they don't have to meet our standards, that can cause some of the issues that Justin was just mentioning with safety and other aspects like that. So that's where I think we're just trying to leave it as there's the base minimum, and then there's other avenues throughout the code and other things that somebody could look to get some exceptions out of it.
Okay. Councilmember Lake?
I have one question to kind of add on to that. So when I'm thinking, I'm having a hard time visualizing the 36 feet maybe versus the 30 feet, and the one that comes to my mind in Fort Collins, and you might not know this, but the private drive that leads into like DC Oaks and the hotel, like would that meet our minimum requirement? That's one of the more narrow ones I can think of.
I don't know. I think Chad's gonna kind of pull up to look to see right now.
Okay.
But the other kind of what I was thinking of when I was talking like a main thoroughfare through commercial is when you drive through super target area, that one drive that then when you get into the other shops has the diagonal parking in, that's all a private drive. So basically, from Ziegler, yeah, Ziegler, and that's all a private drive. That's all privately owned and maintained. That's not city of Fort Collins. They even have that sign right up front that says this is a private drive. That's what, that's kind of more what I was referring to is that's more of like, we would want that to be more of a standard that meets Lucas criteria and some things like that. And the one that you referenced with DC Oaks, I think would meet our local criteria. So when we say local criteria, the street that's outside of your house.
Yep.
That's a local criteria from Lucas. So something similar to that at a minimum as the baseline.
Okay. I have a second question related to the prohibited signs. This is for commercial and residential, I'm assuming, is that correct? So where it says no window signs except as provided in those other sections, so that would impact like all, let's say, the Murphy USA, the Maverick, like they wouldn't be able to have any window signs in there as well, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, as far as like the ribbon streamers, I think almost every new development has the flags that are kind of flying, and so we're saying that none of this would be allowed, is that correct? I see, I see some heads nodding yes, because then my question would be, have we reached out to businesses that do typically have signs in windows, like some of those stores? Because I know, or I'm guessing that they get some of that from advertisers. I don't know if they get money to put signs in windows, but it could have a financial impact. I know you had mentioned you didn't want to limit the size. I know a lot of communities limit the size so that there's that safety aspect, so that X percent of the window can be covered, or something like that. Was that something that you just didn't want to look at, or just didn't think would be as helpful as just prohibiting them?
Yeah, so to touch on your first point, you are correct that all those signs you mentioned would be prohibited with this amendment. We did not have specific outreach to any of the property owners or businesses about this specific request. And we did discuss internally, following our planning commission meeting, about maybe having a size requirement for these types of signs. However, staff, community development felt that even limiting that by size could get away from us and could be hard to really conceptualize. If you just put a blanket size on a window, it may work for one development, but this could be enormous or just be problematic for another. So it just seemed to be a problem as far as review and monitoring that. And so we felt for transparency and to reduce visual clutter, we just felt that there's other options available sign wise for these areas that we were comfortable prohibiting the wall sign entirely.
What are some of those?
Or the window sign.
What are some of those alternatives? Because that's the only way that I know that Maverick is having free drinks on Fridays, some of their icy drinks is from the sign in the window, so that's kind of what comes to mind. What would they be able to do instead?
That is a great point from that specific example. So we were more in reviewing this as the business and advertising, generally the business, those internal functions of that we believed could be done as temporary signs, which are permitted within the town, they're limited durations, but not within the full adherence or implementation on that building as a window sign. I don't know if anyone else.
Okay.
I think I would just like to add that, that when you look at the town of Timneth and the standards we have, you know, there's architectural standards that we go through design on a residential, both our commercial, really trying to instill the type of development this community wants. And windows are really a key component of the look and feel of those buildings. We have sign standards for signage that allow both commercial and residential uses to sell your house, what have you. So the concern that staff has is that if we simply allow window signs to occupy the space of a window, it's no longer a window, it's a sign. And so that's really the intent of why we are having this conversation and why this is being proposed. I certainly believe businesses have lots of other ways to communicate their specials, their advertisement, rather than using a window sign, but that is a policy discussion. And we broached this at the work session, which I know maybe at that point in time, you were not able to participate, but that's kind of where we're at tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, two, two points. One, with regard to signs, I presume this would apply to a window sign that says open or closed, right?
No, it does not. We have exemptions within our land use code on signage for things that are affixed to the doors and windows that state the business name, open, closed, things like that.
Excellent.
This is purely on an advertisement basis.
Got it.
From that standpoint.
Perfect. Yeah, I was worried that that might include that.
No, it does not.
And then it sounded like Justin indicated, and I'm wondering how common it is, that even in Loveland, where they have the Lucas standards, they aren't applying them in the same way residential to commercial, even in the way they've adopted the standards, not by providing a process with a PD overlay, but I'm wondering what other towns actually adopt the Lucas standards for both residential and commercial, pick Laramie County. Does anybody do it the same for both? Which is what, what staff is proposing.
Yeah, so as far as on the Lucas adoption, it's mainly on the, you know, public side, it's all consistent, but there is, it's very silent on as far as, you know, private streets. The only provision in Lucas just says that if, if the town or the city is going to take over maintenance of a private drive, it has to be brought up to standard. So it's not really clear right now in Lucas on, you know, when to use a private street and when not use a private street. You know, with this land use code, that would make it a little bit more clear for the development, at least to set that baseline standard, where it's a little bit more consistent on that. So that's why, because Lucas is kind of silent on what is a, you know, private street versus a public street. Public street, no question, Lucas governs, it has all the standards.
Right.
It's when you get into private street is, and that's been a way to use it as kind of a way, especially like PUDs or exceptional cases, because Lucas is not governed on every single situation. And land developments change over time, too, to be, you know, flexible. What was kind of a standard development 20 years ago, 10 years ago, kind of evolves on kind of what the customers want and on how the developers meet that demand. And I know just over the last five or 10 years, it's really changed quite a bit. So it's just right now, the reason probably why it's not been consistent is because Lucas is not specific on private drive standards. It's still, the only time it governs is if, if the private street is taken over by the town, it's pretty clear that it has to be brought up to the, to the public street standards. I don't know if that helps answer that or not, or if I made it worse.
I think, I think I understand, Councilmember Jenkins, what you're asking. There's not a difference in Lucas for cross sections for commercial versus residential. If it's a commercial development, there's not a different set of standards that says, here's your, your road cross section. If there's a development that requires a local street and it's a public street and a commercial, it meets that criteria. If it's a local street and a residential, it's still the same cross section.
But if it's private?
And that's where Justin was getting to, there's, there's not anything in Lucas that talks about those standards being private, what those would be.
But if we were to adopt the standards as proposed in this resolution, we would be applying the Lucas standards to all private drives, both residential and commercial, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's my understanding, that's different than what Loveland does.
Yeah, there was not anything in the land use code that required, you know, that talked about private drives had to be for.
Yeah, I'll have more to say when we get to discussions, but that's.
May for Tim.
Answers my question.
I want to talk about Lucas again, but in terms of prohibited signs, what about open houses, those type of signs that we see for that? Is that considered temporary in this case? Or where would open house or real estate signs fall?
Those, those fall also on our exempt signs. We have a, in our, in the sign section of the land use code, there's a long list of exempt signs, and those are also exempt if somebody's doing an open house on the weekend, you know, bring that up, that's an exempt sign that's listed.
So functionally, someone could have their sign and then put a 20 foot balloon on top of it, and that'd be exempt?
The balloon aspect would not be based off of this provision, it would just be the sign itself.
Okay.
Yeah, what we, what we have found with the balloons and ribbon, those things, is that something might happen, the balloon deflates, then you've got the balloon and ribbon hanging all over the road, potentially causing a safety hazard. I myself actually was driving through one of the subdivisions that had all new houses that had the 200 foot tall ribbon balloon, and it fell and it got caught on a dumpster and both, both two lines of a ribbon were at eyes, eyes height, trying to drive through the road to where I had to stop and actually undo the ribbon with the balloon just to be able to drive through. So that's, that's what we're getting at with, with this kind of concept.
Thank you. So in terms, again, safety standards of Lucas, if we don't incorporate that into commercial, say, does that put the town at a liability for any reason? Or anything that could negatively, you know, obviously, we want to stay safe, right? We're, that's our goal, we want to protect our citizens, and we're actively working on safety measures within the town. So how would that, how does that look for the town?
We would not have, I'll let Carolyn correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's a private road, we would not have the liability because it's not our ownership and maintenance that we'd have to do with it. We don't have to have it meet those standards. As Justin and Scott had mentioned, if you do a private drive, you don't necessarily have to meet site distance triangles, you don't have to, you know, meet a lot of those other aspects to it, to where it's not ours to maintain and to do anything with. So we wouldn't necessarily be liable because it's not ours. So Carolyn, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, that's correct. So Governmental Immunity Act is going to cover for that type of a claim, should anyone make that claim against you? And there's an exception for known dangerous conditions of public streets, but not, that would not apply to a private drive. So by approving and reviewing plans, you are not then taking on liability for anything in the design of that plan. It would be the developer and their designer that would be responsible for those ultimate edge sharing designs of the internal design.
Thank you.
The other thing with private drives like that from a safety standpoint is if they're not meeting a criteria like Lucas for a minimum, they don't necessarily have to do sidewalks either. You could have an internal drive that has no sidewalks, that then also doesn't provide, you know, pedestrian or even bike, you know, connectivity throughout. If it's an entirely private drive, that could almost go out the window with a certain development if that developer so chooses.
And I think I'd just like to further add, like my experience in my former job, we dealt with a lot of redevelopment. I know that's not the case here, but some of the lessons that I've taken from that experience is that we were dealing with past decisions. And those past decisions often dealt with different standards at that time. And as we move forward, dealing with ADA compliance, sidewalk issues, tree lawns, landscaping, the things that our communities all desire, those prior decisions really made it difficult to redevelop those sites. The developers wanted to maintain that prior condition, yet the community expected those sites to be brought up to the current standards. So therefore, again, the need to have this is to create a baseline so there's a consistency moving forward. And I think that's just, you know, what I've learned in my 20 years in my prior position. I hope the community here, looking forward, is that something that we want to make sure it's future proof in those situations.
Yeah, and this isn't necessarily, I'll say, a Laramie County issue. This is actually becoming almost a nationwide issue. We were at the National Planning Conference just, you know, a month and a half ago, and I know I sat in, too. Logan sat in one of them, that's the same, a different attorney for a different municipality in Texas, his last words were, don't allow private drives, period. Because it's the burden, it's the issue, a lot of municipalities across the country are having the same issue. So it's not just a Laramie County, a Timneth issue, it's actually becoming a big planning, you know, kind of standard across the country of not allowing private drives just because of the issues that we've talked about tonight.
And so is council. Let's say, you know, we're looking at this map here, and they come back and they say there's no sidewalks anywhere on this. What can we do as council? Is there anything that we can enforce or do at that point if we don't have these standards in place?
I mean, we could try and apply some other sections of the code to get sidewalks, but on streets, if it doesn't, if it's not meeting our standard, there's not the requirement that they have to have either detached or attached sidewalks. We could, there's other sections of those codes that talk about sidewalks and connectivity, but it doesn't necessarily address the streets itself of having those sidewalks.
Thank you.
I have two questions, and I'll pass it along. My first one is, in written comments, we received concern that the term master planned development under 2.91011 A2A is not defined in the code. And I'm curious, number one, is that somewhere otherwise defined? I looked in the definition section, didn't see it, but didn't know if it was somewhere else. And if it's not defined, you know, how do we interpret that?
Okay, so master plan development is not a defined term, so I felt that that was a helpful comment, and can propose two alternatives. What was intended was that if the property was included in an approved planned development overlay, because planned development is defined, and so when it said included within a master planned development, we meant it was a subdivision of the property within a larger planned development. And so we can have a minor word modification there if you want to keep that standard, to instead say, the commercial and mixed use properties must have completed a major subdivision process, or fall within a final planned development approved pursuant to section 2.9.14 before applying for a minor subdivision application. Another alternative you can do would be to just remove the words, fall within a master planned development, and require a major subdivision before a minor subdivision. So you do have legal authority to adopt the proposed ordinance with modification, so if you want to make a modification, you can do that. And so the first one would continue the same intent as it was staff's intent that you could do a minor subdivision if you had previously either had a planned development overlay approved, or had a major subdivision of the property.
Okay. Thank you. I think those are, those are good options. And it sounds like it would make more sense to change the language to include, specifically reference planned unit development overlay, because it would allow for that separate process to propose differing standards as opposed to.
differing standards as opposed to, um, making everything regardless go through a major. Am I parsing that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and then my, the question is short. The answer may be long. But some concern has been raised, um, if we, uh, you know, no longer allow our minor, our minor process and require everyone to go through the major process or significantly increase the people that have to go through the, the major process. Can you walk us through from the user perspective, uh, right now, the difference in the process they go through? If we make this change versus if we don't make this change?
So to that, I, I will kind of probably give you two directions on an answer is if there is an end user right now that came before you all saying you were ready to invest, you know, all, all this money and become a member of this community. And we've got a property that doesn't have any lots available or it's not gone through a major subdivision. It would put them through, you know, a potentially roughly 10, 12-month process by, you know, that property owner having to go through a sketch plan, um, which essentially, you know, as, as we've discussed is the bubble diagram of here's what we intend for the property. Here's where we intend, you know, you know, some roads could go. Here's where we intend, you know, these kinds of things. And then they'd have to go through the preliminary plat and final plat, which then, you know, actually is all the design standards for that property. And then they would have to go through the site plan, which would then add on, you know, depending on, you know, how things play out would, could add on an additional six to eight months out of that process. If a property went through the major subdivision now and kind of went through the whole sketch plan, preliminary plat, final plat and, and developed it out as larger tracks, you know, large, you know, swaths of land that are intended for future use, just to, you know, have it teed up. Then an end user, if an end user then came to the table and said, I'm ready to go, we're here. All you'd have, all the developer and that end user would have to do is go through the minor subdivision to create the lot and then do the site plan process, which, you know, at the end of the day would, you know, could be nine to 10 months. So it essentially, if there's a property that doesn't have a major subdivision on it, it's going to add potentially a year to it. If there's a property that's already gone through it and has tracks available, it's only going to add three to four months to an end user's process. Hopefully that answered your question.
It does. A question I was going to ask, but it's a whole can, so I'm going to leave it. I'm going to leave it there.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, what this is intending to do is to actually, um, so it's kind of front-loading the, the knowing of what's going to happen with, potentially with a property. It doesn't, it, it's basically going to tee up, you know, um, property owners, developers to, you know, kind of have an idea in mind at the beginning. And then go through the major subdivision process, you know, and create, they can then at that point create tracks. As I mentioned, just the, you know, large 20, 30, 40 acres if they want, or even get it as small down to, you know, 10, five acres, whatever they want to do. And then at that point, it has essentially gone through the public realm, um, of knowing here's what the intent is for this property. So then when that end user does come to the table, it's then an easier, quicker process for just a quick minor subdivision to then create that end user's specific needs for a lot. And then be able to do that and then their site plan. Cause the way it currently is now with, without, uh, you know, this being in place is somebody could come to the table as an end user, do a minor subdivision and then do the site plan without having any public comment, any public hearings, anything like that. So what we're intending to do is basically get the, what is the intent of this overall property known first before that end user comes to the table. And then it's almost too late that something comes in.
So we heard public comment from different potential folks and one was situated such that, um, no development has started. And, uh, they're talking about potential development and I could see how, okay, do all this work upfront and eventually it'll work out, make sense. We had some other folks that are kind of, have already started the race. And I'm wondering for people that are situated like that, you know, what, how, how do they, um, how do they successfully meet their business goals? And how do we successfully meet our town objectives of having sufficient oversight and public input? You know, to, as these things develop?
I mean, that's, I think that's a tough one to answer, um, you know, from that standpoint. Um, I think that's going to be more up to you all. You know, with this amendment that's in front of you, uh, you know, it's not going to be perfect. Cause if we wait, you know, to, to delay something like this on another, we could have another property owner come forward with the same concern of saying, I've, I've just got, I've started off on this, you know, situation and I've kind of got my foot in the door and I'm starting to work through this. And then we're kind of back at this same conversation potentially in the future. Um, who knows? That's why we're trying to, you know, get out ahead of it now, um, you know, so that it is now a known. Um, and that's the kind of the rules to play by, um, from that standpoint, instead of trying to delay or kind of find a different avenue from that standpoint. So that, that one's a, I'd say a little bit more complicated, but that's where I would think it's more in your all hands on, you know, if you want us to move forward with this or have a condition to change it, or just kind of pause on this one at this point.
So several, I guess, questions, maybe, and maybe some of them are car comments that I'll save for later. But, uh, when it comes to the minor versus major, Mr. Nelson brought up earlier, floor and decor or Walmart, right? Some things that we've got a retailer, they want in. If we extend this 12 months, we're not going to get them and we might not ever get them, right? Being that minors don't require a public comment or hearing, I think kind of skirts some of the things, um, on transparency and, and hearing what we want the, the public. Is there a way to have, you know, ask for, uh, you know, a minor and, and have us approve it and include public comment? Or is that always if it's a minor, we don't get public comment? Is there a way to ask for, you know, permission and, and include public comment in the mix? Or is that just not normal protocol?
I mean, so from that standpoint, um, you know, you kind of touched on it is that it, it precludes public comment. But at that point, it's just, it would, it could, the way that our code is now, it could continue to, you know, that be that perpetually is. We've got this great end user. We're going to do a minor sub. We've got them and we're going to go through that. Then the, you know, 10, 10 months later, we've got another great user. We're going to minor sub it and get it together. That's why I was saying it's, this is actually kind of setting up for the public to know, you know, kind of off the bat is here's what the intent is of this. And, and that's where I was, you know, this is set up to where all they'd have to do is one major subdivision first. You know, and get the larger development, they, you know, they could do a larger development tract. Then at that point, come through with those minor subdivisions. Cause at that point, it's gone through, here's our intent of we're going to, we want to have residential in this area, commercial this area, industrial this area, or mixed use in this area as part of the sketch plan and plat. So folks essentially should know kind of from the beginning, here's what it is. And then when a minor subdivision comes in for that one or two end users, it's been known that that's what was slated for that area. Without any of that, you wouldn't have that, you know, the public knowing here's what's slated for this. So they could do the minor subdivision, get an end user in quick and then, you know, kind of look towards the next to do the same concept. You know, from that standpoint. So I would say if, you know, even adding in public comments to a minor subdivision process for commercial still wouldn't give the end goal. Cause at that point you're only learning about one end user, not the entire property as a whole from the public standpoint.
It makes total sense. Um, okay. So that's, that was question one. Question two on the private drive isn't ultimately, when, when you do an entire, uh, sketch and, and approval of a, you know, a division like this, when the term private drive is included, they just have full cart blanche to do whatever they want? Or is it still ultimately town and planning commission and then council, um, to approve what those private drives are?
It, it's kind of that full cart blanche with, without having standards, as Justin had mentioned. There's nothing to, to hold them to from a drive standpoint. And, uh, I'll kind of touch back to, you know, what councilmember Wagner had asked about the sidewalks. Is if we, you know, go with the minimum standard now that, you know, Scott had mentioned, through a PD overlay or some other, even with a private drive, you could still require sidewalks or something else. If somebody didn't want to do those, you know, initially through a PD overlay or however it is, you could still have some say in what that design of that road looks like. So you could still require sidewalks if there was not intended. If somebody wanted to do sidewalks on one side, but not the other, but you all didn't feel comfortable with that as part of a PD overlay, you could still require two sidewalks on either side of the street, because that's what our minimum standard would be.
Okay. And then the last question, if we're not doing balloons and we're not doing streamers for all of our, you know, friends that are building homes in here. I, I've seen a, a influx of very large flag poles. And in turn, the flag poles could have as many flags as they want. Do we have requirements or restrictions on how high a flag pole can get and what lights can go on it and what, how many flags can go on it? Cause they're going to want to promote their neighborhood and get these things developed and, and sold quickly. So.
So the flag from that standpoint would fall under our flags and banners portion of the sign code, which we still have a restriction on that. It's no more than 60 days out of a year in a certain size. So flags still get caught within the, the land use code already is, is another portion of it. So they could still do that for a portion if they want to do it for the beginning of their develop, you know, the first model home that goes up. But there are still some requirements and restrictions around those.
So if they wanted to fly an American flag, 365, they can only do it for two months?
No, not an American flag, but like an American flag is fine. But if it's like, if it's their builder name or development name, that's what has the restriction to it.
So, but theoretically, theoretically, they can put Toll Brothers for two months and then put Timnith Lakes for two months and then put, and they keep switching the flag since it was only one flag or?
No, they'd, they'd have, the one flag would have the, the six, the 60 days, two months out of the entire year.
Got it. Okay. Those are my questions.
Yeah. Um, so one of the suggestions to deal with the lack of a definition of master plan development was, uh, potentially, um, or, uh, fall within a PDU overlay. Specifically for Ladera, would that, uh, they've gone through the PD overlay process, correct?
They have, but their PD overlay doesn't, um, their PD overlay wouldn't necessarily get them the ability to do, um, just minor subdivisions from that standpoint.
Okay. So back to the earlier question about, um, the impact on, on a potential business investing in Timnith. If there wasn't a master, or wasn't a, uh, a major subdivision, that major subdivision would take roughly a year, if I heard you correct. And then a minor on top of that would be another three to four months?
At that point, at that point, if there's an end user that's in, in known, uh, the final plat would plat out that end user's lot. They wouldn't have to go through a minor subdivision after that. It would own the, when, uh, kind of the example that I was giving is if a developer, for a developer to just do kind of a blanket, we're going to have the blank slate to it. No end users are known, then that's when the minor subdivision comes into play. But if they go through a major subdivision with an end user in mind, that final plat would most likely plat out that lot that that end user would go into. So there wouldn't be an additional minor subdivision from that. If it was all, if the major subdivision was all done for that end user, the plat would be done from that standpoint. There would be no additional minor subdivision.
Right. But that's not the most likely, uh, situation. The most likely situation is a major subdivision of the property and then they go hunt down businesses to come in and then they have to do a, a minor.
Correct.
So it, it means that basically you end up with maybe up to a year and a half, from the point of a major to a final approval.
Yeah. If there's no end user known, yeah, you, you'd have about that time period. But yeah, what it, kind of what you said is, you know, go through the major, then hunt down the end users, you know, would most likely be the, you know, typical route.
Yeah.
Um, and that's where like I had mentioned, since they'd gone through the major, they have that ability to do the minor, to do the quicker route to then get that end user in.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? So I think we have a number of potential paths forward. Um, one thing I heard is concern about the, uh, process being rushed. Certainly one option is the council could, uh, choose to table this and bring it back in the future. Another option is that council could choose to pass the land use code amendments as suggested by staff. And then a third option is that, uh, we could choose to consider to adopt, uh, some subsection, and potentially amend some things. So, uh, whether we went with, um, looking at some amendments or passing the whole thing, procedurally, the way to get there would be for someone to make a motion to approve the land use code amendments. That would then, uh, generate discussion. In the course of that discussion, if folks wish to propose amendments, that could happen in that process. Uh, if we didn't want to get there and we just wanted to, um, send this back for some more time in the, in the sausage machine, then the proper thing now would, would be a motion to table this. So all that in mind, I would entertain any motions at this time.
I move to approve ordinance number 11, series 2024, and ordinance amending chapter 16, article 16 of the Timnith Land Use Code Amendment Number 14.
And is there a second? I will second. So at that point, we move on to discussion and I think this would be a good time to, um, kind of hear everyone's thoughts, including whether or not some amendments would make sense. And, and then we can deal with those in turn if, if that's what, what people think.
I guess I feel a little uncomfortable passing it as it is. So as far as what some of those amendments could be, I think there were a few areas that I feel like possibly the majority of us are all maybe concerned about the same ones related to, and I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know what that amendment could be, but something possibly related to the private drives, something related to, um, the major versus minor subdivision possibly. And then for me, I'm just kind of curious about the signs. That's not a, a sticking point. So whether that's something that we talk about tonight, or whether that's something that we table to do a little bit later and gather additional information is, is kind of up in the air.
Yeah. So I think you hit the nail on the head, Lisa. Um, those are the two that I'm most concerned about. I'm, um, on the, on the major versus minor, um, I think there's a real, there is a real balance there between, um, the needs of a, a developer and outside business to have some certainty about, um, what they need to do in order to, um, invest millions of dollars in our community. And I think, you know, I'm concerned about changing the rules in the middle of a game for some people that have already invested millions of dollars in our community. I'm also, on the other side, I'm also concerned with, um, the minor subdivision not having, uh, a venue for adequate public input. That's not right. It's not fair to the community, uh, to the citizens of town, to not be able to have a say, uh, uh, at least help guide us. So I think there's more thought that needs to go into the major versus minor. And I don't necessarily have all the answers there, but I think it needs more thought to have it come out in a balanced way in which we're protecting the interests of the developers, the best interest of the town and also, uh, the best. protecting the interests of the developers, the best interests of the town, and also, uh, the best uh, opportunity for citizens to have, uh, input and be transparent about, uh, things. So that's, that's my feeling on that part. And then with regard to the, the blanket application of the Lucas standards, I'm concerned about that having a negative impact on, uh, commercial development, uh, moving, moving forward and some, again, some thought needs to go into how we accommodate a balance there. Um, and I don't think if we just simply adopt it, there's not, it's not clear to me what the mechanisms are to provide exceptions. I mean, it's, it's, they're not, not clear at all. So I'm concerned about those two items. The signs I'm not really concerned about and the bulk of the rest of the stuff seems like, um, updates to, uh, make it consistent with, with, uh, requirements, either state requirements or others. Um, yeah. So those are my thoughts right now.
Councilman Hope?
I am, um, surprisingly concerned on the signs. Uh, and the reason why I say that, and, and I think Lisa brings up a good point earlier, as we, um, welcome more restaurants, more retail, uh, I think of Rally Five when I drive down Harmony Road, uh, one of my favorite places to go. And I wouldn't know that it's pineapple season or peach season, and I wouldn't probably pull in there and spend my money because I'm not normally a Fort Collins, you know, goer of. So Timnith, unless you live in Timnith or trying to get to Severance, um, most people don't know, you know, what Murphy has inside of it and they probably won't stop unless there's something that attracts them to it. So the thought of, um, other man, you know, uh, social media, whatever, maybe most people coming through Timnith aren't going to be checking their social media to see what those businesses are. So the ability to promote what their business is doing, um, I don't want it just to be a carte blanche, you know, giant Coors Light sign, um, all over the place. But if it, if it is, um, promoting what their business has or the specials that are going on, I think there could be, um, some leeway with that. And, you know, I think, uh, planning commission maybe proposed a certain size of sign. Um, so I think maybe we revisit that. And then also, I mean, at this time, um, I wouldn't be comfortable approving everything, you know, carte blanche as far as the, the private drives and go either, uh, I think, uh, learning more about maybe the intent behind it and not shutting it down right away. Um, is, is the route that I would like to see. Just get some more information on that.
Mayor Proten?
Yeah. Excuse me. So I, I, I agree with Councilman Jenkins about the idea of intent. I really like the idea of intent with the major subdivisions and, um, working through that. I understand what our, um, I want Timnith to be a business friendly community. I also want it to be the best place to live for our residents. Uh, that is a balance. That is a balance. So I, I like the idea of maybe coming back to that. Um, I, first I want to thank staff for your hard work, right? Uh, by no means am I an expert, so we fired a lot of questions off to you tonight and it really helps. So I, I want to say that. Um, as far as the signs, I'm less concerned about it. Um, you know, I definitely don't want to see, you know, we've made, um, provision changes to Harmony Road for the windows and we've done those type of things. So I'd hate to see that come. So I'm fine if we revisit it. Um, but I definitely think I want to remain strict in what we do because I drive down Three Bell and those balloons, uh, if it's windy, it's all over, right? So I think there are some good ways to move on that. So I'm fine revisiting it as a council. As far as the private drives, um, I, I do have concerns about either side of this argument. And, um, you know, I definitely don't want to hinder a commercial by any means, but I want to be able to walk in Ladera. I want to be able to, you know, that multimodal. I, I think there is value to that. And this development, I'm so excited about, um, excited about all the possibilities that are going to happen out there, but I want our residents to be protected. I want there to be a standard. So, um, if council wants to revisit that, I'm open to revisiting that. I, I don't say we remove it, but I would say we revisit the, the private drives and maybe get some more input, um, from our, our community, both developers and residents, if that's possible. I'm not sure how to do that, but I do think I would, uh, revisit those two around private drives and major and minor subdivisions.
First, with respect to the minor subdivision, major subdivision issue, um, I think our current process is flawed. I think that, um, simply relying on the minor process right now does not have sufficient, uh, public notice and public input. And it has, uh, led to some things like the Walmart parking lot that maybe had there been some more focus and attention, um, wouldn't have happened that way. Um, so I, I, I don't like our, our current process. I appreciate, um, the developer perspective and I understand the challenges and how having overly cumbersome processes, um, can be a detractor. And, and I certainly don't want that to be the case. Um, I really like staff's point that there is no good time to change the rules. Um, and then at some point you, you just need to change it. Um, so for me, this is one that maybe it could make sense to, to think about a little bit more. Um, but I say that, uh, fully advocating that our current process needs a change, needs a change. Um, with respect to the Lucas standards, um, I would personally be in favor of passing it as proposed, uh, given, uh, that there are avenues to make exceptions to that standard. I think having a standard that you deviate from is, uh, better for the town, better for community safety, better for quality development than having no standard at all and then trying to use other processes to stop something. Um, so I personally would adopt it and then rely on, on the various exception processes there. Um, the other one that I've heard a lot of discussion on is, is the sign. Um, I appreciate business need to advertise. Um, but also we want a high quality visually appealing, top-notch town. That's why we have specific harmony standards. And, um, you know, when, when windows stop being windows and start being signs, um, you know, that, that concerns me. Um, I think if we want to allow for signage that allows things, let's adopt the code that allows people to put up signs, um, as opposed to, you know, repurposing windows. Um, I, I appreciate what planning commission was, was getting out wanting to be business friendly, wanting to give them those avenues. Um, but, um, you know, how our town looks, that, that visual impact is, is important. And I think window signs is one place that we're falling short on that now. So those are my thoughts. I did not hear any concerns, um, other than that pertaining to the minor and major subdivisions under section 2.910, uh, the signs under 662, and then, um, the, um, Lucas standards, uh, Lucas standards under 662, and then the signs under 7.623. Uh, so one way we could tackle this is, um, to consider an amendment on each of those three things, discuss the merits of that amendment and, and either eliminate those now or, or pass them along now. Um, or we could take them all as, as one chunk, but I don't necessarily hear complete agreement on, on all three items.
So I still think there's a issue of transparency that, um, even if we just focus on those three, I don't think has been fully addressed. And I think there could be some improvements there. I don't think they necessarily have, need to happen tonight. Um, but I'd like to see some direction to staff to maybe propose some ways in which we could better inform our developer community as well as the rest of the community about things that we're proposing to change. So they could participate in that discussion before we have a finalized resolution before council. Um, so, uh, yeah, uh, that's my comment on, on the transparency issue. It's still, and I'm okay with, um, everything except for the, the, the Lucas standards proposed as is because it's not clear to me what the mechanisms are. You referenced that there are mechanisms for exceptions, but, um, I don't know what they are and I don't know what the parameters are around what kind of exceptions, uh, we would be allowed to approve or that they would be, it's not at all clear. So until I have a better understanding of how that exception mechanism would work, I really can't, you know, if I knew that, then I could support it. But until I know what the details around that, I have a hard time supporting, adopting it. I think having a standard for private drives is great as long as there's a way to talk about, uh, the needs there and have a balanced approach. So.
And, and what I heard a little bit on that is that, um, if somebody was thinking ahead and wanted to, uh, not comply with the standard when they proposed their, uh, PD overlay, they could include different road standards in that that we could consider. Um, if somebody has an existing PD overlay, um, but wanted to change it, they could suggest to us, um, an amendment to their PD overlay. And if they didn't want to do that process, um, similar to the request that we considered a couple of weeks ago, they could ask for a variance and basically have the Lucas standard not apply in a, in a given instance and to allow for a, a different road standard. Is Carolyn, am I hearing that or am I remembering that correctly?
I, I believe those are all three possibilities. Yes. The variance, would it, would it be a variance process? I'm going to kick that one to planners.
It, it would be a variance process.
Through the, to the board of adjustments.
Yeah. If it, in, in a situation like that, it would be a variance, um, from that standpoint. Our technical criteria manual, which is what engineering goes through, there is an engineering waiver that's just approved by the town engineer, but on a situation like that, we would most likely go kick it to you all as, you know, council for either the PD overlay or a waiver, or not waiver, a variance from that standpoint.
Thanks for that clarification.
And, and in both of those instances, there would be opportunity for public input?
Yeah. Board of adjustments, variance request is a public hearing. So that would have a pop possibility for public input.
And same with the PD overlay?
Any other commentary before we consider motions?
Yep. So I, I think I was probably the biggest stickler on the sign piece, but knowing that that is more on the window side and knowing that a business has the ability to ask for acceptance to put out a temporary sign, uh, I, Backyard Bird, for example, there are a frame that says chicken and donuts or whatever it may be. If a business has the opportunity to ask for approval for temporary stuff, um, uh, but I am absolutely in favor to the mayor's point of, uh, not adding a bunch of signs and windows because then it just becomes, um, but allowing them the opportunity if they did want to advertise in a temporary fashion to do so.
Okay. So I will ask a question, um, in 7.6, uh, the proposed language says that you can have temporary sign permits for inflatable signs and balloons. Just a clarification, can they also do temporary sign permits for window signs?
We're looking at the code real quick. It, uh, 744 on temporary signs doesn't actually specify on what kind, if it's like a window sign. Yeah, it's, it's upon the, the director, planning director may grant a temporary, um, sign from that standpoint. It doesn't specifically say what kind, but if window signs are going to be prohibited, it would most likely not allow a window sign as a temporary.
And, uh, would this also apply to things like happy birthday, happy graduation, et cetera, in somebody's front yard? Or we had a, we had a baby, which I've seen several of those around.
The way the language is written, it would not prohibit those.
Yeah, it says, uh, that's an exception that was at a prior discussion. So it says, um, inflatable signs and balloons are prohibited except for personal use to advertise temporary events on private property, gee, birthdays, graduation.
So the motion before council currently is to pass the land use code as suggested. Um, I'll note that staff had previously withdrawn, uh, the article 10.61.2, uh, regarding the petition for annexation. They are going to look at some of that language. Um, it, it sounds like people are kind of okay with, with the signs, um, but that maybe, uh, if anyone wanted to propose it, uh, we could consider, uh, an amendment, uh, to, uh, remove section 2.9, point 10, point 11, point A2, from the amendment, or we could consider a motion to remove, uh, section 6.6.2, which relates to the Lucas standards from the amendment. Um, so at this time I would entertain anyone who would like to propose an amendment.
Yeah, I, I think I would like to see a little more thought, uh, put into both of those. Um, so I'll make, uh, an amendment that we remove, um, section 2.9, point 1, 0, point 1, 1 dot A, dot 2, dot A, and, uh, that we also remove section 6 dot 6 dot 2 dot B dot 1, um, and, uh, request that staff come back to us with some additional, uh, language on, on both of those.
So the current motion is to, um, remove both of those. Um, and we could certainly do that. Uh, if there's a second, we could discuss that, or we could also consider, uh, addressing them in turn. I don't have a preference, uh, but, but the current request is for an amendment, uh, to remove.
Both of them.
Both of those, uh, together. Is there a second on that proposed amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay. So I'm improperly moved and seconded. Now we can discuss the proposed amendments if anyone has, uh, anything they'd like to share. For me, as previously stated, if I had a preference, I would, um, remove the minor subdivision, uh, but keep the Lucas standard in there. Um, but, um, that's just my personal preference.
So, so understanding the motion, these will come back to us though, right? We're all agreeing or is that in the motion? I don't understand that part of it.
I don't know that that needs to be part of the motion. If you just want direction to staff that, um, I think it is duly noted that we will bring these back to you. We are going to be at, probably at a different time, bringing back the oil and gas work session, given the time and, um, and then also be, uh, having, bringing back the annexation amendment. So you're going to have some opportunities for some future land use code amendments coming up in the near future.
Thank you. Uh, therefore I, I do support the motion in that if we do direct staff to come back. So I appreciate that.
So, uh, any other comments? So the motion, I, I want to be clear that I have it right, Councilman Jenkins, is to strike from the proposed, uh, amendment to the land use code, uh, under 2.9, point 10, point 11, point A, point 2, subsection A, essentially strike. Subsection A essentially strike, commercial and mixed-use properties must have completed a major subdivision process or fall within a master plan development before applying for a minor subdivision application.
Correct.
And I suppose incumbent within that by striking A, the rest of the section would renumber. So what is now currently would become A or would return to A. And then also to strike under 6.6.2, proposed B1, all essentially remove the red language there, which includes private drives shall be designed to local street criteria at a minimum per the Lucas standard. The design of alleys shall meet Lucas.
Correct.
Okay. So that being the motion, and this is a motion to amend, all those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay. The amendment carries four one. So now the question before council is whether or not to pass the amended land use code as amended. Before I call the vote, is there any additional discussion? Okay. So the motion before council is to, as it pertains to in ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 6, the Timoth land use code, to amend as proposed with the just passed amendments incorporated. This being a change to the land use code, I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this.
Thanks. Mayor Robert Axsmacher?
Aye.
Mayor Pretem Luke Wagner?
Aye.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt?
Aye.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Aye.
The land use code amendment as amended passes five zero. Onto item 7B, in ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 6, the Timoth Land Use Code Amendment number 15. Mr. Kemper?
Thank you, Mayor Axsmacher. So as you recall from our, our meeting that we had, work session about these land use code updates, that conversation ended up running into that council meeting, so we weren't able to have an in-depth conversation about all those items. So that is why we pulled three of them to be on a separate update or amendment for review tonight. Those three items being additions to the modification to prior approval and administrative procedures, and then a reworking of our buffer yard requirements within the town. So first was with the modification to prior approval. We were proposing additional prerequisites for these additions specific to landscape and infrastructure plans. So within the code currently for modifications to prior approvals, it is limited in the sense that it says that the amended plan does not change more than 10% of any measurable standard on the approved plan. That was difficult to actually enforce with some of these things being plant locations or infrastructure, that being water sewer lines, shifting distances and things like that. What that actual 10% measurable was, was a little bit difficult for staff to truly enforce and understand. So we added the, the sections in there. One, some clarifying language that this plan does not change more than 10% of the design, which would be plant counts and open space requirements. So that could be the percentage if they're reducing that or increasing that, we would have the ability to do so upon demonstration that this increase or decrease is appropriate for the proper function of the development. So there wouldn't need to, we wouldn't just blanketly make these approvals. There had to be some justification there warranted. This amendment would then not reduce these standards below what is required. So although we have the ability to make changes within 10%, we would not reduce it below whatever the requirement is per the code. That would then fall under any waiver or variance requirement or request to council if they're looking to do something that is not meeting the minimum of that code. So in addition to that, we are adding that, that it does not create a 10% increase in the building footprint. And a reduction in building footprint shall be permitted under this section does not also impact the building's height for residential density. So that is one standard that we could have a measurable width, but we did not want to create something that would be a large increase there as such as building footprint that we would need input from residents or from council as far as any of those changes. The amended plan proposes changes to public improvements and drainage shall be consistent with the town, Timoth Design Criteria Manual and Lucas Standards, in that these amendments requesting relief, as I mentioned before, contained in Section 2915.3 would then fall under the waiver process for approval. And I can continue with all three. We can have the discussion after.
Sure, let's do that.
The next one was to the administrative plat criteria. Ultimately, that was limited for staff to do an administrative lot line procedure, shifting in lot lines on developments or approved plats based on the boundary of 10 or fewer lots being changed. Anything over that would require a full resubmital if it were for a major subdivision, so sketch plan, but may have to be amended if possible, but definitely preliminary and final plat would have to be submitted just for amending lot lines of over 10. So we have removed that and added that the amended plat continues to comply with the standards of this code for the original approval and that the proposed lot line adjustments will not require an amendment to any previously approved plan set. So if they, any of these changes result in something in the construction, landscape, any other plan set, then that would move it forward for that, that full review. This just gives flexibility to where we're not in these situations that aren't necessarily warranted if it's truly just a lot line adjustment, meeting all our standards as it is. And then lastly, we are looking to revamp the town's buffer requirements. So ultimately, we are trying to simplify the base standard for the buffer width to create something that would be attainable by all development. However, it gives us the ability to provide enhanced planting standards. So the quality of those buffers with the proposed plantings would be greater than what is existing as far as just the plantings are concerned now. But it would also give the town and staff flexibility when reviewing these plans to truly understand any adverse impacts that a development may have on adjacent properties. So we would have the ability to request any additions to that to make sure that any of those impacts are mitigated. And that is mimicking what we have as a requirement within the site plan development process as well. So just reinforcing that those impacts and being reviewed more on a case-by-case basis, but being able to obtain that base standard and ensuring that we're, we are creating a buffer screening, but we're also not necessarily separating everything in the town. And there's more cohesion within this. And so we did review this, at least the buffer width with surrounding municipalities. And, yeah, I was just looking to see what the numbers were. And so what we would have proposed would be the minimum, the smallest buffer for the largest adjacent use or adverse use could be 30 feet minimum. Town of Windsor has 25 feet is their maximum. Severance is also 25, Wellington is 15, Loveland is 30, and then the city of Fort Collins is also just 20 feet. So we are in line with the width requirements for this buffer standard. So we feel comfortable with that and just having the ability to review these and enhance those standards based on additional plantings, maybe firms and different options like that.
Right. Thank you, sir. As I mentioned earlier, this is subject to a public hearing. So at this point, we'll receive any comment from the public. The folks that spoke earlier on 7A certainly are entitled to time here if they would like it. I'm seeing no. Thank you, Ms. Wells. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Our third commenter is no longer with us. Anyone else from the public that wishes to comment? So at this time, questions from council would be appropriate. Mayor Pretem?
Chad, I just want to ask in 2.9.18 for these modifications, I get the purpose of not going up 10% in increasing building footprint. Can you help me understand why we may not want that in going down? And I relate this kind of to our harmony corridor and saying, you know, if this is our most valuable real estate, if somebody comes in and says, you know, I'm going to put 10,000 square feet, and then they come back and it's significantly smaller and we've gone through that process. So can you help me understand why you may not want that for downsizing a building footprint?
Yeah, so that would be a fair point. I think more so that was intended for not reducing our residential footprints, ensuring that they're providing what was initially proposed within that. However, this, this is something that could be waived within the process. I think we could have a further conversation on maybe allowing that same allowance to decrease as well.
Does that question make sense? Did I state it properly?
Oh, I apologize. It actually shows that it would be permitted. So that's the confusion there. So, yeah, we have it that it would be allowed to reduce that without concern. So I apologize, I was trying to.
Yeah, the way that's written is, the way that it's written is that there can be a reduction on the footprint. What we don't want to have happen is somebody with a 10,000 square foot building at 30 feet tall say, I want to go down to 8,000 square feet, but I want to go up to 35 feet kind of a thing to make up for that, kind of for some difference from that standpoint. A reduction is fine as long as they're not modifying anything else. It's just if they reduce but then go higher, that's where it wouldn't apply.
In height.
Yeah, in height, yep.
So somebody could potentially come in and say, you know, I'm going to put 20,000 square feet out there, and they come in with 5,000 square feet, and that wouldn't necessarily require a review in a sense?
From that standpoint, no. But a building that, I mean, at that point, the site plan is approved that way, we would still have the, we could still have the discretion to say it could, it would need to come back through a new site plan.
Okay.
From that standpoint, it's more of if somebody is at, you know, a site plan that they intended for a, you know, covered patio area, and when they get through, you know, going through construction and they're like, you know, we don't want to do this anymore. We're just going to landscape it instead, there's that allowance, you know, from that standpoint. But if it's an entire kind of redo of the site, it would have to go back through the site plan process.
Okay, thank you.
See no more questions? I don't have any. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 12, series 2024, ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 6, the Timoth Land Use Code Amendment number 15.
I will put a motion to approve ordinance number 12, series 2024, in ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 6 of the Timoth Land Use Code Amendment number 15.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by councilmember Lake. Discussion.
Seems straightforward to me.
Sounds like it's straightforward, very well. The clerk would please, since this is a land use code amendment, clerk would please take a roll call vote.
Mayor Robert Axsmacher?
Aye.
Mayor Pretem Luke Wagner?
Aye.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt?
Aye.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries five zero. Let me check in with council before we adjourn this meeting. I think our plan is to conduct the work session after this. Is everyone still on board with that? Okay. Yeah, my thought is let's adjourn and take a.
Well, my thought is that we may want to just continue the work session until another meeting since, you know, it is later and it was, you know, posted for much earlier in the evening. So we could also, I guess staff recommendation would be to put this on in a couple of weeks. It would be probably July 9th.
What's your recommendation, Erin? Is that your recommendation?
Well, the meeting was noticed for 5:30, so that's the issue because we didn't open and continue the meeting. So the potential concern is if somebody anticipated having it, then we're now nearly three hours past that. So when Carolyn and I were whispering back and forth about it, her recommendation was, would be to continue it.
I trust and appreciate the advice of our legal counsel. Does anyone take umbrage with that approach? All right, so should I?
You're proposing it for when? The work session, July 9?
We're looking at July 9?
I. Tentatively.
Tentatively, yeah. I'm out the, what is it, the 23rd, but I'm here for the July 9th. So that would work for me.
Carolyn, would you propose that I close the main meeting and that we open the work session and then continue it on the record?
Actually, no, I think we'll be fine. We can just repost the work session when we get to the rescheduled work session.
That shall be our plan. Anything else before we adjourn? Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.